Or can I pull it up? All right.
All right, good evening everyone. My name is Grayson Cecil and I'm a regional planner at the Lumber River Council of Governments. I'm here today to present to you Scotland County's comprehensive land use plan for 2024 to 2033. As a bit of background on the plan, uh, the Lumber River Council of Governments has been working with Scotland County uh, over the last several years to update the comprehensive land use plan for use over the next decade. This is a little North Carolina general statute 160D that was passed um in July of 2023. It required that local governments must A, adopt all certain, or update all tax procedures in the form of the North Carolina general statute. And B, to adopt or have a reasonably maintained comprehensive land use plan.
Since then, the Lumber River Council of Governments has been uh, working to develop a 160D updated zoning code. This is the more restrictive um, the more restrictive zoning document which gets into procedure and um, procedure and and others, yeah. And the Lumber River uh, Council of Governments continued working with Scotland County to assist in meeting the second criteria of updating the uh, land use plan to meet the, to meet chapter 160D's requirement. Getting into the document, um, getting into the document, we first identified some uh, key themes about Scotland County. The first is that Scotland County is a rural county located predominantly in a rural uh, region of the state. This means that the county, its farmers and rural residents will continue to play an active role in the economy and the agriculture of uh, agricultural future of the re- of the region and the state. Next, uh, the next theme we identified is that Scotland County is strategically located midway between Wilmington and Sharp along US 74. Uh, as well as uh, as well as inside of the county, southeast regional airport and the county is in close proximity to I-95, uh, a major north-south interstate. Um, these transportation corridors leave the opportunity for growth within the county. And that's why we've highlighted them here. The next key theme that we identify is that while population projections for Scotland County show decline um, in the coming decade, the shifting of a large pop- uh, large population bubble of baby boomers is going to significantly influence the housing needs um, and demands on services within the county. Next, the document goes on to identify the ongoing strategic uh, the ongoing strategic initiatives um, in Scotland County. These were adopted in late 2019 by the Scotland County Board of Commissioner, um, Commissioners and uh, these are the five strategic initiatives. The first was to facilitate a group of education and job training discussions within the county. The second was to update the 2014 comprehensive Scotland County land use plan. The third was to promote local working within uh, within the city and chamber. The third, uh, or sorry, the fourth was through tax audits to evaluate the tax rate structure and to prepare a report to the board. And the fifth was to build stronger community relationships with constituent citizens. These ongoing strategic initiatives were used as a um, as a guide in us, or a guide for us in creating the plan. Now delving a little into the statistics, we get to the uh, total population statistics within the county. Scotland County has seen a pretty significant decline in the overall population over the last decade, decreasing from thirty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-seven to thirty-four thousand one hundred and uh, one hundred and seventy-four residents. Uh, the pro- projections continue to show decline in the next coming decades with about uh, with about a ten percent decrease uh, projected by twenty. And below you can see a um, change in population graph from nineteen, uh, from nineteen hundred to twenty twenty. Continuing into population statistics, um, the plan goes on to talk about the change, uh, the population age change in terms of uh, age demographics. In Scotland County, the median age and the percentage of the population over sixty-five has risen pretty significantly. The median age is now thirty-eight point nine and an estimated seventeen point eight percent of the population is sixty-five years or older. Below you can see a graph here, um, this is in the plan and it represents the change, uh, the change in percent of the population in each age bracket. You can see that um, on the left four, that there's been some pretty significant declines in the age brackets from under five years uh, or five years and under all the way to the nineteen years and under. And then on the right of the graph, you can see in the last uh, the last three columns, uh, you can see pretty significant rise um, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, twenty-ten being the green and twenty-twenty being the orange. Next, the plan goes on to identify the uh, some county employment statistics. The first is that as of September twenty-twenty-three, the employed civilian labor force within Scotland County was eleven thousand uh, two hundred and six people. While the unemployed, uh, well, the number of unemployed people was six hundred and twenty-six. This leads to an unemployment rate in September of five point six percent. Below you can see the unemployment rate in Scotland County over time. You can see that there's some pretty significant jumps in the unemployment rate as um, recessions happen. Delving even further into the employment statistics, um, we get into uh, breaking up the employment by job sector. Manufacturing remains the largest sector within Scotland County. Um, however, over the last ten years, it's seen, it's dropped by about five percent. Um, in that same vein, utilities and information sectors also saw the most significant uh, the most significant amount of job loss with forty-two percent and thirty-nine percent respectively. Uh, on the other hand, the transfer house, uh, the transportation slash warehousing, healthcare slash social services and professional slash scientific jobs have all seen uh, growth in their sectors as with transportation and warehousing seeing a growth of a hundred and twelve percent over the last decade. On the left you can see um, you can see a breakdown of employment within the county, right being the twenty-ten workforce breakdown and left being the twenty-twenty workforce breakdown. Continuing into the um, economic conditions within the county, we get into some of the income statistics. Scotland County's median income is thirty-nine thousand uh, eight hundred and sixty-six. This is up pretty significantly uh, since twenty-ten um, by about, by about nine thousand dollars. On below you can see a graph comparing the median household income in Scotland County to the median household income for the state of North Carolina. You can see that uh, Scotland County has lag since um, since nineteen eighty when the graph starts. You can see that Scotland County has lagged behind the state. Um, and especially in um, two thousand and ten, there was a pretty, or from two thousand and ten to twenty-nineteen, there was a very significant jump in uh, the state income while there wasn't as much of an effect seen into uh, in Scotland County's income until the um, twenty-twenty-two uh, income statistics came back. Continuing into the uh, median income uh, statistics, here we have a comparison with Scotland and with Scotland County and the neighboring counties. Hope, Richmond, Robinson and Marlboro in South Carolina. You can see here the raw figures for median household income uh, in the middle, in the middle column. And then on the right, you can see the median as a percentage of the state figure. Delving into the poverty statistics, which has been an ongoing issue in Scotland County, twenty-six point eight percent of Scotland County residents live in poverty. This is more than double of the state rate of twelve percent. About forty point two percent of people aged eighteen years or younger live in poverty. Below you can see a breakdown of the percentage of the population in poverty based on age brackets. The top being the total population in um, the top being the total population in poverty, the second one being sixty-five years and older. Below that, eighteen to sixty-four, the prime working years, and then below that is um, eighteen years and younger. Next, uh, getting into the county's housing statistics, below you can see a graph for housing type. Um, you can see that about sixty percent of the houses within Scotland County are stick-built homes. About twenty-six point six percent are uh, mobile homes and that leaves the remaining thirteen point eight percent as um, as multi-unit homes, so, or multi-unit units such as apartments and duplexes. Forty-one percent of all of the county's residents rent their homes. Uh, furthermore, rental units are going, will make up a pretty significant portion of available housing within the county, especially for younger adults. The last um, housing boom in Scotland County was seen in the seventies uh, with the number of permits since the nineties having dropped uh, pretty extraordinarily since then with uh, over the last decade, most years not even having um, not even having fifty housing, uh, fifty housing permits granted. Next, we get into some of the utility statistics, the first one being broadband. Um, NC Broadband's survey in twenty uh, in twenty-twenty-one suggested that about eighty-nine point nine percent of county residents have access to the internet speeds of that would constitute broadband. Um, though, while it, while this stat does mention the access available in the county, it does not mention the affordability of the services for these things. Um, and below you can see a um, you can see a map from the North Carolina Department of Information Technology which displays Scotland County's broadband profile, displaying some of the underserved locations. These take into account um, mostly affordability of the services, either people not having the devices to access or properly utilize it or um, or people simply being unable to uh, unable to afford the service in total. Continuing into the utility statistics, we get into the county water systems. So water usage within Scotland County has not really increased overall. Groundwater remains the biggest source of um, the biggest source of drinking water um, within the county. Um, and below you can see a graph here, uh, on the left, you can see the water systems graph which has the system's name uh, broken up by the juris- or broken up by the jurisdiction. Uh, the number of customers, average daily use in millions of gallons per day and the lines of uh, and the miles of distribution line. Uh, overall, the system has untapped potential to allow for um, more expansion. However, um, uh, there has been some slight growth in the cone of depression in the water table below um, below lumber, or sorry, below Laurinburg. Waste water utilities, um, in that same
Go back and say that again. About the water level?
Oh, uh, yeah, under Laurinburg, uh, there, when the Lumber River Council of Governments had done a water stud- uh, groundwater study, we had found uh, in twenty-nineteen, we had found that there had been slight growth in a cone of depression, which is created when you're, when um, deep wells are drawing water from the ground, which kinda, it creates this kind of cone which can dry up some of the wells up, well, up the aquifer from it.
So with the cone of depression, every ten years or so, for those of you who don't know, I'm David Richardson, I'm the executive director at the council.
That way the folks won't lie.
I'm sorry, um, good evening everyone, I'm David Richardson, I'm the executive director at the council of government. Um, Grayson's been working on the plan, but let me give you some background in relation to that cone of depression question. Every ten years or so, the council of government works with our member governments to look at the underground water aquifers across the region. Even though we've got a lot of surface water across the five county area, think of the Lumber River. Most of the water we have that we use in our daily activities with our industries, that is actually coming out of the ground. So the COG was proactive back in the sixties or seventies. There were capacity use zones put in place in northeastern North Carolina. We saw that as a potential issue happening here in southeastern North Carolina because we are such a underground water user. So the counties came together and we started to examine the underground water infrastructure across the region to look at those aquifers to make sure that too much water wasn't getting pulled out. So about every ten years, we do a study, we look at it. The last time we did it was, we started in twenty-seventeen, we finished about twenty-nineteen. That last study we did out around FCC, which is one of your larger industries, oh, several of the city of Laurinburg's wells for the city of Laurinburg Water System is also out there. There was the indication that a cone of depression has started to form in that area. What a cone of depression is, if you think of sinkholes that happened in Florida, um, it's where all of that water has been pulled up. It's happened in other parts of the region before when Smithfields came in in Tarheel. There was a huge cone of depression that was developed out at Smithfields. But the county had some conversations with Smithfields about water usage, how it was going on. They started doing more recycling of their water and things got better. The last time we looked at it in twenty-nineteen, we noticed that there was one forming here in Laurinburg. So that's something when we do the study again, um, which we'll be coming to you in a couple of years to talk with you about doing the study again because we want to continue to be proactive with what we're doing and monitoring those underground aquifers. If it's got bigger, it's something we're gonna want to have a conversation about. Is there a way to maybe look at relocating uh, water wells somewhere else? So somewhere else in that aquifer, the water is coming out of. Right now, it's not a big concern because we know what's causing it um, because of all that use. I know the city of Laurinburg's in the process of looking at replacing some of their wells. So that may help with it restoring that underground water system as um, as we go. Did that answer?
When you say FCC, you talking about the one on four oh one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought.
Yes, sir. Other, other questions about that?
Continuing on from that, um, getting into some of the wastewater utilities um, within Scotland County. We can see uh, with the two middle columns on the wastewater system, you can see uh, with the wastewater system uh, table, you can see uh, with the left being permitted capacity and the right being the average daily flow that uh, all of the water systems within Scotland County are well below the permitted uh, capacity. Um, which means there is room for sustainable growth and development along the um, infrastructure lines that you have in place already. After I must have skipped a page. Okay. After uh, going through the statistics, the document gets into some recommended goals that um, that we have for Scotland County. The first uh, is to promote land use decisions that encourage development in suitable areas while protecting natural resources and the rural character of the county. Um, using a lot of the data within uh, the plan and data from um, sustainable sand hills. Uh, the COG did some analysis and created the suitability maps. Uh, here you can see an example of one where um, green represents the suitability for building uh, for residential expansion. Uh, blue represents the suitability for industrial expansion and red represents the suitability for commercial expansion. Um, and then the white areas are the areas that you would be unable to, or wouldn't really be suitable either because there's not the infrastructure in place for expansion out there or because it's private property or there are other conflicting factors such as Camp McCall up in the north of the county. The next goal is to promote the recognition and enactment of actions to protect uh, natural resources, including groundwater resources and giving particular emphasis on quantity and source protection. That quantity and source protection is going to kind of s- help to limit the development of um, these cones of depression and help to make sure that we're able to continue using our um, aquifers for drink, or for drinking water and other water sources for um, the foreseeable future. Next, the document gets into some, uh, next, the plan gets into some recommended objectives. The first is to maintain all existing land use ordinances related to emerging technologies and energy sources such as solar, wind and hydroelectric power to maintain a, uh, to maintain a competitive and sustainable community. The next is to identify infrastructure assets and transportation corridors where investment is needed that will help to support future economic growth and development. Next is to promote fiscally responsible uh, growth by reviewing and updating land use regulations and ordinances recovering uh, recovering costs with development and encouraging growth in areas where development is most suitable. Uh, using again the suitability maps found throughout the document. The next recommended objective is to promote multi-generational planning approach to ensure that all residents' needs are, needs are met, especially, or with special attention on the um, aging population with that um, bubble of baby boomers that we had kind of talked about before. Um, as these people, as these people grow older, they're going to be, uh, they're going to be looking for a live in, or age in community. Um, which means they're going to need certain services and stuff to make sure that they can maintain a happy life within the county. Uh, the next recommended objective is to conduct a housing survey that looks at issues such as the types and cost range of housing versus the needs in those categories. The next recommended set of, uh, set of objectives starts with first, working with the cities, uh, the city of Laurinburg and the towns of Gibson and Wagram on land use and growth issues through coordinated, coordinated planning to to ensure that the, uh, that we're taking a long-term planning approach. Um, next is to continue to participate in the Lumber River Rural Transportation Planning Organization to better plan for highway, uh, for highway and other transportation development within Scotland County. Uh, Scotland and the neighboring counties, including the dev- uh, the continued development of US seventy-four. The next recommended objective is to continue to partner with the military to protect military facilities and training from incompatible land development. This means uh, for example, with Camp McCall, to uh, ensure that the, that land isn't being developed out in those areas. So we're protecting those military facilities. And then lastly is to actively work, or sorry, um, before that. Uh, the next recommended objective is to work to uh, protect property rights and land values by soliciting public participation in land use policy and decision-making. And then the last recommended objective is to actively work to pr- uh, protect the valuable natural resources such as water, prime farmland and the natural preservation areas within the county.
Grayson, go back to uh, the one, continue to partner with military to protect military facilities and training from what, what, what would that be? What would be, what would you be looking to protect?
Um, like I said, with like Camp McCall's um, facilities out there, just making sure that um, expansion isn't happening into the areas that um, the military may be looking to either expand into or maybe looking to utilize in those areas that we've set aside.
But with the land they own already and the game they're in on the edge of that, there's not a lot could really go. I'm just thinking out loud, but
Sounds to me like it's ba- basically a matter of communicating.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and and I, I spoke to Grayson and David a little bit before the meeting started because I know that a couple of years ago, we had an issue with a uh, group had bought some land a couple of miles from Deercroft and was trying to start a military-type training facility. And when I looked at, read this, it looked like I, I guess I expected to see something more in line of making sure that residential areas were protected from
Well, um, I will say that as well, um, looking to protect it from both sides on the residents, making sure that they're um, making sure that their boundaries aren't being crossed and then making sure that there's, just maintaining that ongoing line of communication between the military and the county.
We, I, I think we, as a group, I felt like, a couple of years ago, felt like we had done the right thing in regard to that and there were, that, there were gonna, going to be some uh, changes or revisions in the zoning issues and uh, and we were hoping that was gonna be taken care of and that, very honestly, I've not looked at those. I understand they've been approved, but I haven't seen whether or not that does that or not. David's behind you shaking his head, so I don't
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um, I want to follow up with what Commissioner Gibson is talking about. So the land use plan that we're talking about tonight, this is more of an overarching document to try to help inform from a statistical point of view, from a condition of the county, long-term strategically as you're making land use decisions. That's what this document here tonight is about. It's the less intense, it's more of the general document that you've gotta have according to the, in um, chapter one sixty D of the general statutes. The concern about the regulation for the Holmes Oprah in Deercroft, that is something that is gonna be more specifically addressed and covered by your zoning ordinance. Um, that was done, it was adopted back in June um, twenty-twenty-two and I apologize, um, Jean Klein, who was our planning director at that time, worked with you on that, so I am not completely familiar. I know she spent a lot of time with the planning board going through and one of the members of the planning board may remember. My instinct tells me there is a provision in there about shooting ranges, gun ranges, those kinds of things. If, if you need something else added in um, that you don't feel currently addresses that situation, please let us know and we can help you do the amendment to get that included in your zoning ordinance. Because I do think with the military presence that you've got here in the county, especially with Camp McCall and as Fort Liberty expands again, if we get to another round of BRAG, it's something you as a county need to be cognizant of and always forward-thinking about um, to have and play the military. Influence can be a good economic driver for the region, but it also presents some unique concerns that you need to be taking into account with your land use planning, with your zoning. Um, so if, if you don't feel what you've got is strong enough, let us know and we can help you go through and do an amendment to
What you've got in here in regard to protecting the militaries and communicate better, we would love to see some of the growth that Hope County has had.
I will turn it back, I'm sorry.
Thank you again, David. All right, um, well, I believe we've gone through the objectives. So um, next, we kind of get to the in summary. Like David said, this is a more generalized document. This plan is intended to provide lawmakers kind of with a analysis of the county statistics to provide a foundation for guiding the decisions that you guys make um, when it comes to development over the next coming decade. After the plan is adopted, uh, the plan should be treated as a living document. It may be amended by following the procedure outlined in one sixty D. As county conditions change, we're more than happy to continue working on this and um, help to assist in making sure that all of the data is, or the data and statistics within are pertinent to the county. That should be everything. Thank you all so much for your time, uh, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to help. Uh, and if you have any other questions about procedure or anything like that after tonight, you can uh, feel free to contact me uh, at the
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we'll open it up for questions or you guys, anything you want, have a question or have you, have you been, had time to go through this?
We have and Essentially, this is the same plan that was presented in two thousand and fourteen. Actually, it's the exact same plan with demographics changed. And in two thousand and fourteen, the county commissioners chose not to approve this uh, proposed plan. I was not at those meetings, I don't under- I don't know the reason why. I don't know if it was explained that it was just a general guideline, but it does appear that it is exactly that. I don't know how much more specifics would need to be added into this. It if you look at other counties around us and their um, comprehensive land use plans, they are a good bit more detailed and specific, which tells me that if we are going to keep pace with the surrounding counties and by the demographics, it doesn't look like we are. But if we would like to do that, I think that we need to expand on what has been offered here. And one sixty D does allow for the county commissioners to have planning boards, be it a zoning and planning board or additional boards to research and offer additional information, additional guidance. Uh, you can bring in outside sources besides COG and other folks. And we would, as a board, offer our um, our board to your service if you so desire.
Well, I do have a concern, I'm more of a concern is, look at Hope County, you brought up Camp McCall. And you know, I look at the growth of Hope County, Moore County, more so on our side going up five oh one. I would like to know what, you know, what we can do to get some of those uh, individuals who are stationed at Fort Bragg and
I think um, and the plan kind of goes over, I think some of the uh, most pertinent things that you could do because uh, some of those people that are living in Fort Bragg, one of, I think one of the best things that you could do is to kind of expand the uh, infrastructure. So people aren't having to, m- more direct routes from Fort Bragg into the county kind of uh, and developing around that.
So if I can, um, So if I can, my understanding in regard, and I will say, the plan is based upon the previous one that was done back in 2014. My understanding from the previous county manager is that that plan was adopted, when we started the process, that that plan had been adopted. This is coming from the conversations I had with our planning director.
What did you, what did you get?
Okay.
That may be the.
That may be the one that was sort of adopted as a stopgap when there was a mandatory deadline. This was.
That was more recent.
No, actually, that was older than 2014.
Well, there was.
There was a plan that got adopted a year and a half ago.
But it was not the 2000.
Yeah, 2014 was actually kind of a repeat of something that had happened five to 10 years before that, I think.
Well, John, John and Whit would be the two that, you was in 14, you remember?
But I'm part of the baby boomer crowd that's going with senile on us here.
Well, it is concerning if you say this is the same document. I mean, we should at least research, see.
If there's additional things y'all would like to put in, this is the draft of the plan, tonight's the comments, if we need to add additional things, if there's additional things you would like added to the document, we're happy to do that.
The question, Mr. Jim, excuse me, Chairman Millen, if you would, what are the things that you've seen in other counties that you think we might want to include in ours?
I haven't really had time the last week or so since this was scheduled to look through the old documents that I have from two years ago, when we were on a deadline to offer to the state.
Right.
Yes, we have a looking. I'll be honest, I have not looked back through those, but I have gone out from Bladen County, from Pitt County, from Hope County. And what I saw with Hope County, I've got a copy of it if anybody would like to see it. I'll be glad to leave it on the table for whoever wants it, but I do not remember specifics from those without going back through.
Were the goals more specific than these sort of generic, general-type recommendations that are in here?
Yes. They had, again, not faulting what, because you will see, this is a general guideline.
Right.
And we need to use it as such, but they have additional personnel, they have a lot more research within the county, a lot of county commissioners, a lot of planning and zoning board, individuals within the county, and they've got a whole list of people, Pitt County, the same thing, Pitt County, they have about 30 people listed that actually help with their planning and zoning.
May I ask, was it a comprehensive plan? There's two separate plans, because for the, for some of the towns, for some of the towns, we are doing a comprehensive plan, which is involving more public input, more public surveys, more public outreach. It's a much longer document that we're doing for some of the towns that do not have, did not have an existing land use plan in place. From the information we received from the previous county manager, and you know, personnel has changed on both sides over the course of time, our understanding was y'all wanted to update your existing land use plan. So that's what we've done, instead of going through that full comprehensive plan process that we're doing with a lot of the small communities. So if what I'm hearing is you want to do a comprehensive land, comprehensive plan, that is allowable under the statute as well. You can have either or, the land use plan or the comprehensive plan. If you want to do the comprehensive plan, that's something we can help the county do as well, but it's, it's, it's serving the same purpose, but it goes at it from a different direction. There's more surveys, more outreach, more public input that comes in than with this land use.
I think 160D says a land use plan uses the text and the maps. I believe that's the verbiage they use.
Right. So this is a much more simplified document than that big plan. And I, my, I think from looking at some of, I know like Hope County, theirs is more, and I think theirs is more of a comp plan. So if that's what you're looking for, that's something we can help you do as well. But that's where we, how we ended up where we did.
I guess the most important thing is, are they benefiting from that comprehensive plan? Does that help in Hope County or Pitt County, whoever, that helping them grow?
I, I don't know that it is. I think the key with any plan and the basics here are from your land use plan. I think the, the key is going to be, do you use the plan? Do you reference the plan? And what do you do? I think with the economic growth, the economic development, what you're looking for, there is a comprehensive economic development plan to bring in that industry. There's lots of different kinds of plans there, and I think it's, what, what are you targeting and what direction do you want to head in? With your question, Commissioner Williams, about how are they bringing in that development to Hope County, part of its location, you know, a big chunk of Fort Liberty is right there in Hope County. So, so they're getting that spinoff. And when the last BRAC happened, we thought Northern Robinson County, Scotland County was going to see a lot of that growth and development, but a lot of it went to Harnett County and Moore County, which geographically is further away. And I can't explain why, what I've heard, the theory is it's based upon where those gate locations are. So you can get in quicker to Fort Liberty, coming in the routes from Moore County and Harnett County into Fort Liberty than you can coming in from Scotland or even Northern Robinson, although geographically, we're a lot closer. But because of where those gates are located to get into Bragg, and I will tell you, into Liberty, I got to get used to saying Liberty. I think we all do. I, that's what I've heard, but I'm not an expert on military policy.
It seems to me that the land use plan needs to protect our citizens, protect our property, and kind of maintain the values that we've had. But I think it also should keep us open for anything new and innovative that might come in. I think in a county like Hope, they had such an explosion of federal money and facilities and people, that they probably needed some more restrictive guidelines as to what they were going to allow. I don't think we want to do that. Now, my sense is I wouldn't want to do that. And I think that if you, my guess is that most of your comprehensive plans are places where something has occurred that has caused an influx of an industry or of people or of workers, or in the, in case of BRAC, the military. I don't think we've got that. And so I don't know that it's necessary for us to do that. If there's something specific that we need to guard against or put as part of our land use plan that helps us bring people in, then I would like to investigate that, if that makes sense. Yeah. So if you, if you know things that other counties have that we might want, because it would help bring people in or protect what we've already got, then maybe we need to look at that. But other than that, I don't know that we need a lot of additional things in our plan.
Is that comprehensive plan just about restrictions only?
It gets in more specifics about how each one of these goals can be worked toward, like take a single goal, like work the city of Laurinburg and towns of Gibson, and then it goes into pages of how that can actually be accomplished. It's, it's much more detailed than the comprehensive plans that I've looked at.
It's more, it's closer to a strategic plan, I think would be the best way to look at it. It's more goal, task-oriented, there's still the statistic part, but you're right, it is much more detailed with implementation of the goals.
Isn't there a piece in it about growth, to strategically grow your county?
The ones that I have looked at, yes, they do address that specifically. This document, when I read through it, the demographics scared me. I'm going to be very honest, they scared me. And as you may know, we've got two solar facilities that are being addressed by the planning and zoning board, and they're taking up approximately 1,200 acres of property. And I looked back through these demographics, and if you will notice between, I'm not sure if it's 2000, 2020, or 2010, 2020, Scotland County has lost 20% of their usable agricultural land. One of the goals here, we're looking at location of land that were suited for certain things. And I noticed, this says actively work to protect valuable natural resources such as water, prime farmland, and natural preservation areas. And both of these solar facilities are in areas that the maps in here designate as prime agricultural and natural resource areas. So that is one area that I think must be addressed in a land use plan and possibly even further in amending our ordinances to look at solar a little bit more in depth than we do in the future.
What you mean, as far as occupancy, how many do we allow, things of that nature? Pardon me? How many do we allow come in the county?
Yeah, that, that would be up to the county commissioners to consider that.
Those are your concerns.
But you know, there, there may be a point when, a tipping point, when the agricultural land and the natural resources, we had to say, well, maybe we have to look at reducing the number of solar farms to allow. That, that's something for another time. That's something for another time.
Well, I think we're getting off on something completely.
In 2014, when we were discussing that with, that time with Fort Bragg, but now it's Liberty, we were discussing this area from 1541, the Deercroft area, all the way back to Camp McCall. And the military was very concerned, they came here and addressed us about the issue, and they are wanting that to stay undeveloped. Do you recall that? And that's what we're up against. If the military wants that to stay undeveloped, and they offer, you know, this package to people that own land, acres, they would subsidize them, they could still farm it as long as they promised. They would not develop it for housing or shopping center, et cetera, because they do their training up there, and they want to be able to set down a helicopter, whatever. And second thing, I do know when we was discussing the landfill many years ago, there were 1,900 acres up there that was to be bought, and there were many acres up there that some people had invested in. They haven't built a single house up there because of Camp McCall. The helicopters, they do the training at night, and they say they're very low, and so I want to see it develop, but we're dealing here with Liberty now.
I think you'll have a problem with location there because of location nearby, right? 401 may be more sensible, you have right with Wagerum, Wagerum versus 501.
Absolutely.
And at the same time, you want to run the military down, or do you want to work with that area there has a tremendous amount of gangs, which is one distraction for them and us.
Well, I think we all, our goal is the same, we want to. I don't like it when I see Scotland County going from 36,400 down to 20, to 34,000. That's not good, and it's projected to go down more. We need to do something to stop that.
Yeah.
We don't need to accept that as the gospel and go home with it, we need to fix it. And this, and this Fort Bragg, the only reason why Hope County is growing, why I would like to look at that plan.
It, it is the primary driver. It is the primary.
Yeah, I don't think, their industry's not gaining any more than anybody else. All right, so in the interest of time, because we're coming up on our next board meeting, but the process in this would be that the zoning board would make a recommendation to us, and then we would plan at our next meeting, whichever meeting that is, to have a public hearing before we could take action on it. So that's, we will not be taking any action tonight on it. So our, the other is up to them as to what, you know.
I have a question. With the general, with this land use plan being general versus the comprehensive plan, do we have the leeway to set our own comprehensive under the general guidelines? Are we able to, you know, break it down under the general, and then set our own comprehensive plan to plan under those general?
Let me, let me respond with a question, if that's okay, because I do know we're running out of time. Mr. Chairman, if the county is okay with it, we would need to extend the contract term, but if the county is okay with it, both the county commissioners and the planning board, what I would suggest we do is we schedule a time to come, have a separate meeting with the planning board, talk through their concerns, see if we can extend it further out, do some more in-depth stuff that you're asking about, and then come back with a further presentation to the county commissioner. Now, we would, the contract we have currently expires at the end of December, so we probably need to extend that three or four months to get the work done, because it would be likely after the holidays before we could get all those meetings set up.
Jim, are you comfortable, are y'all, is the planning board comfortable with that?
I think so, we have a meeting planned December the 14th, but I'm not sure we'll have time to address anything, but we've got the two solar facilities that we have to address.
And I don't think the cog could be there that night, because that's the.
What about January meet?
I guess what comes up is something else in the January meeting.
I mean. Y'all can call a special January meeting, right?
Is that going to be an increase in cost?
No, sir, we'll do it as part of the cost.
It'll be an increase in cost?
No, sir, we'll do it as part of.
Part of the cost, okay.
I'm speaking as just one commissioner, I think that the planning and zoning board knows more about what we need perhaps than this bigger board does. And so I'd like for the recommendation to come from them as whether we accept what you've got or whether you want to go into something more comprehensive.
Well, that's pretty much what we have to do. I mean, we have to wait for their recommendation, one way or the other, before we take action on it, so.
I understand what Whit said, and I agree with him completely on that, yeah. I think their recommendation would be.
Chairman, I had a question about that, the process, and I've actually gone through 160B, and I can't find anywhere where it's mandated that it has to go through the planning board. Now amendments to ordinances do, but it does stay in there that the county commissioners have the opportunity to appoint boards.
But we're bypassing you if we do that, and.
That's, that's, that's a bad plan.
We don't want to do that, so.
I'm trying, I guess, to get out of that.
We'd love to have y'all do this.
We'll be glad to do that.
Okay, all right. So with that, is there any other questions about it then? Thank you, David. Thank you, Grayson.
Thank you very much.
And with that being said, the motion to adjourn that meeting and get ready for our next meeting in nine minutes. If you have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned for nine minutes.